I'd like to call the Monday, December 11, 2017 City of Oakwood Council Meeting to Order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here. And may I have a report on the minutes of our November 6 regular work session and executive session? Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've read the minutes from those meetings and I found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is favored, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so ordered. Under Status Reports, we have a full house here tonight because we have a lot of neat news to celebrate with our community. So, we have a promotion to, we have a new chief for the Public Safety Department, and we have a new lieutenant, and we have a new public safety officer. And so, you want to make a few comments, and then we're going to go down and swear, and swear these folks in?
It's okay, Your Honor, I'll come down with you and do it from the podium.
Perfect, all right. Do you have a chief come on? Yeah, yes. Come on up.
So, Your Honor, you're going to have to indulge me tonight, I'm going to actually read this, and I, I thought about committing it to memory, and I realized I was going to forget half of this, and then I thought, you know, maybe I could cut it short, but for something as significant as a promotion to the Public Safety Director in Oakwood, I thought it was important to, to read this. So, I'd like to present Alan Hill to everybody here tonight, and also to the community who may be watching this meeting either live or on a rerun. So, Alan Hill began his career in our Oakwood Public Safety Department in July of 2007, when he was hired as a Public Safety Officer. In that capacity, and as with all of our PSOs, Alan provided police, fire, and emergency medical services to our community. Prior to coming to Oakwood, Alan served for ten years as a deputy sheriff with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, working in all aspects of law enforcement, including patrol, investigations, internal affairs, and as an evidence technician. Over the years, he also served as a full-time law enforcement instructor at the Regional Training Center for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, as a community education officer in Washington Township, as a school resource officer in the Dayton School District, as a member of the Montgomery County Organized Crime Task Force, as an officer in the Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force, and was an active member of regional SWAT teams for over eleven years. Here in Oakwood, Alan was promoted to the rank of captain in April of 2011. Since that time, he's served in the capacity of both operations captain and administrative captain. He oversaw or had significant involvement with many major department projects, to include developing improved policy and procedure manuals, upgrading our dispatch center to the new countywide digital system, implementing the CAD software system, earning the department's Ohio Collaborative Certification for meeting professional standards, and he is now overseeing the final stages of completing major upgrades to our city 911 system. In 2014, Alan became the first member of the Oakwood Safety Department to complete the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program. After the retirement of Major Andy Baldridge in May of 2014, Alan was elevated to second in command and assisted Chief Alex Bebris in overseeing the day-to-day operations of the department. Effective November 11 of this year, Alan is now serving as Director of Public Safety, carrying the joint titles of Police Chief and Fire Chief. Chief Hill was raised in the city of Kettering and is a graduate of Kettering Fairmont High School. He earned an Associate of Applied Science degree in law enforcement from Sinclair Community College, and a Bachelor's of Science degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Columbia Southern University. He is state certified in providing police, fire, and emergency medical technician services. And finally, Alan and his wife Lisa have been married for sixteen years, and they have a seven-year-old daughter named Kaylee. So, I would like to introduce our new chief, Alan Hill.
Would you and Kaylee like to join us? I think also, is your brother JD also here? There's JD. And your mother-in-law Maggie, is she here? Would you like to join us as well? I will administer the oath of office to Chief Hill. Got that part? Raise your hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
In all respects
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter
The provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of this city
And ordinances of this city.
And will faithfully discharge
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Public Safety Director
The duties of Public Safety Director.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have something you want to give to your spouse? Go ahead.
I'm going to move on to the promotion of Lieutenant Mike Tanner. Shortly after my promotion, or was announced back in September, we started a promotional process within the department. We had seven public safety officers submit memoriam of interest to participate in the process. Let's go ahead and bring Mike and his family up. Yeah, come on up, Mike.
Coming with Mike is his mother Charlene, his father Robert, his spouse Jessica, his daughter Megan, did I pronounce that right? Megan. They told me to not call you Megan, they told me to call you Megan, I apologize. And daughter Ann, and daughter Kate. The whole family's here, great.
Seven public safety officers submitted a memoriam of interest to participate in the process. Our process is a comprehensive evaluation of both internal and external. Each candidate went under, underwent a work review history, they participated in an administrative oral interview board, and they went through an assessment center conducted by the FERL Group. The assessment center evaluated things such as written and oral communication, decision-making, organizational integrity, interpersonal sensitivity, and overall evaluation for the position. At the beginning of this process, I recall having a conversation with somebody, and I said, "This very well may go down as the most competitive process in the history of the Public Safety Department." It's no secret, we've talked a lot about the last ten years, that we've drawn a lot of talent that's sitting in this room from area agencies. Each one of these members, for the most part, finished first or second in their competitive process with us, and now they're all competing against one another for one position. I think the results of this are evident with the top three candidates finishing eighty-seventh hundredths of a point from one another. I think it's, it's a true testament, they pushed each other, they challenged each other, and I think as a result, the organization will benefit from that. The winner of that process was Lieutenant Tanner. Lieutenant Tanner began his career in the early 1990s with the Germantown Rescue Squad. Somehow, he ended up at the College of Wilmington, where he earned a bachelor's degree in sports medicine. After graduating from Wilmington, he went to the paramedic school, and ultimately in 1997, he was, or he was hired by the city of Middletown. For the next thirteen and a half years, he served the city of Middletown, and twelve of that, he was within a promoted rank within the fire rank of an emergent, of a squadsman. Mike came to us in 2011, 2010. It was clearly evident Mike's desire to work here. For those of us who worked within the organization prior to that, there was a period of time where I think Mike was here more than some of our own employees. And I say that, that was his committed, commitment and his dedication to get hired here. Mike spent a lot of his off days learning about our organization, riding with different officers, and truly understanding what it meant to be a public safety officer. From that day forward, through his hard work, through his dedication, and through his commitment, annually, he's statistically a leader in a lot of categories, and I think it's evident of where it got him today. Lieutenant Tanner brings more than twenty years of professional service, knowledge and experience to the rank of lieutenant. Knowing Lieutenant Tanner, he's going to hold himself accountable, and he's going to hold his men accountable. I look forward to watching you grow in this capacity and serving in your role as a crew supervisor. On a personal level, he's a dedicated husband to Jessica, he's a proud father of three beautiful girls, and with that, I say congratulations. This was well earned and not given, and much deserved. Thanks.
And so, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof
Obey the laws thereof.
And that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of this city
Provisions of the Charter.
And will faithfully discharge
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of Public Safety Lieutenant
Duties of Public Safety Lieutenant.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Officer Wells.
Would you like to come down, Officer Wells? And accompanying him is his spouse Rachel, their son Keegan, daughter Kinsley, and daughter Kemper. Did I get those names correct? Great.
Officer Wells is a rare find for the Oakwood Public Safety Department, and I think he had a difficult challenge on Career Day. He was conflicted on what line he was going to get into, and I say that, when Josh was hired last month on November 13th, Josh comes to us fully certified as a police officer, a firefighter, and a paramedic. Josh immediately began his FTO program with Officer Evans. He had required no additional training, and he, I'm glad to report, as of yesterday, he successfully completed his FTO, and he's going to immediately begin serving as a fully functioning public safety officer. So, for us to hire somebody and within a month have them on the street and working on their own is a credit to what Josh brings to the table. Josh came to us from, as a full-time Beaver Creek firefighter/paramedic, and he also worked at the New Lebanon Police Department as well. While at Beaver Creek, Josh oversaw the quartermaster system and was responsible for an $80,000 a year annual budget, and he's yet another example of us drawing talent from other organizations within our department. So, with that, Josh, I look forward to your development and your growth, and I think we all say, welcome to have you aboard.
So, if you, Josh, would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio
And of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
In all respects
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter
The provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of this city
And ordinances of this city.
And will faithfully discharge
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Public Safety Officer
The duties of Public Safety Officer.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
My duties are done, but we have yet another presentation to do, which the chief will take care of us. Mr. Mayor, Council, Bob, Mr. Wyler, Mr. Tucker, this, this is a part of the job that I get to enjoy because of, I get to share experiences that other officers participate in, and the things that they get to do that not everybody sees. Last week, Detective Yount was recognized and received the 2017 TCSU Investigation Award at the Year-End TCSU Agents Meeting for his work on a large-scale marijuana grow operation. Anyone who's ever been involved in these kinds of cases recognizes they come with huge personal sacrifices. You go to bed late, you get up early, you miss meals with the family, you're in the middle of something and the phone rings, and you gotta go. Many on our side of the building walk by Jeff's office, they see a closed door with the light out, and they don't really have any idea of where he's going and what he's doing, and it's moments like this where we can talk about it and we can bring to life the work that's actually being done behind the scenes. Although this grow operation was not located within our city, there's no doubt our community and several other surrounding communities are a better place as a result of these investigators' work. This grow operation is now closed for business, they're no longer dealing drugs, it's off our streets, and potentially, it's out of our kids' hands. So, tonight, I recognize Detective Yount, and I want to present him with this letter of appreciation which reads as the following. Detective Jeff Yount, Jr., in February 2017, the TCSU investigative unit began an investigation into a large-scale marijuana grow operation spanning across several jurisdictions. Due to the size of the investigation, TCSU Director Charlie Stegelmeyer sought assistance from several TCSU agencies. When the opportunity presented itself, Detective Yount jumped without hesitation. Over the next several months, Detective Yount balanced his daily schedule between always taking care of Oakwood needs first and working countless hours on this investigation. The investigator's work ultimately paid off and led to a six-count felony indictment against the suspect. As a result of Detective Yount's dedication and commitment to this case, TCSU Director Stegelmeyer recently presented Detective Yount with the 2017 TCSU Investigation Award. It is my pleasure, Detective Yount, to award you this letter of appreciation for your professionalism and hard work. Thank you for your job well done.
We have a full agenda tonight, and I wanted to say to Detective Yount, I bring you greetings from your former professor at the academy, Mr. Tom McAllister. He's very proud of you. And he probably had several other of you folks that worked, that worked in our PSO that had been through the Sinclair Academy. Anybody have any other questions they want to comment at this time? Then, the next item is also our chief, he has a report. Two months ago, we had some citizens address council that was concerned, who were concerned about traffic violations in the city of Oakwood. We committed to them that we would study this matter and get back to them at our December meeting, and we have tasked Chief Hill with that report, and if you'd like to come and address council on your findings, we welcome you back.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, subsequent to the October council meeting, Captain Jones and I reviewed the council meeting in its entirety for the purpose of hopefully helping us better understand the citizens' concerns. From there, the Safety Department began conducting a series of traffic evaluations inside enforcement utilizing uniform patrol in two specific areas within the city. Hathaway at Delwood and Kramer at Southview. Prior to conducting any analysis, Captain Jones met with several residents in an attempt to better understand their concerns, so therefore we would have an idea of how to go forward and address them. In the meantime, while, while this was going on, the city recently purchased the radar speed sign that has been invaluable in allowing us to collect data in certain areas of the city where it's been up so far. For the first area, Hathaway and Delwood, this was, we provided visual monitoring utilizing uniform personnel, and we placed the recently perched radar, radar speed sign capturing northbound traffic at Hathaway and Delwood for a six-day period. The results are as follows. Over the six-day period, the daily average speeds from a, from a Thursday to Tuesday are on the chart set forth in this presentation. The highest daily average speed occurred on Sunday at 22.7 miles an hour. On all given days, the daily average speed for vehicles traveling along this roadway was more than two miles an hour below the posted speed limit. In total, approximately ninety-two and a half percent of the vehicles recorded during this monitoring period were, were traveling at or below 30 miles an hour, within five miles an hour of the posted speed limit. As we look further into the numbers, the radar speed sign has the ability to count cars, and it provides us a totally, a total daily volume of vehicles that pass. In this six-day window, 2,616 vehicles passed this location, of which, 16 vehicles were traveling greater than, than 10 miles an hour. When we look from an enforcement standpoint, that's one of the first numbers we're going to look at. This device captures two measurements each and every time it has a reading. One, it captures a peak speed, which is going to be the highest individual speed for each recorded vehicle, and the second, it's an average speed, as it picks up a car if it has a reading of 32 miles an hour. Thirty, forty-three tenths of a second later, it's coming back and it's getting a second reading and a third reading. So, what the sign does is it captures a car at 32, 31, 29, 27, 26, and then as it passes, it gives us an average speed. So, what we saw in our count, 2,616 vehicles had passed Hathaway at Delwood, of which 1,233 had a speed between 30 miles an hour or less, which is, which is right around 50%. We had another, we had another percentage of vehicles that were traveling between 26 and 30 miles an hour, and then we had the very few peak vehicle speeds of 10 miles an hour and greater. When we look at the average speeds, the average speeds show that although vehicles were traveling and had a peak speed of greater than the posted speed limit, when you look at their average speeds, there was a significant reduction in their overall speed, which shows us the signs working and people are obeying the speed limits, and, and that is indicated by the blue chart right here. We had zero vehicles with an average speed of greater than 10 miles an hour, and only 33 vehicles with greater than five miles an hour with an average speed. When I look at this from a public safety enforcement standpoint, with 92% of the vehicles traveling at or within five miles an hour of the posted speed limit, I'm not going to stand before you and say that there's not an opportunity for, for improvement, and we will continue visual patrols and use of the radar sign, but, but for us, this is within acceptable margin for us as it relates to traffic enforcement. The last chart I want to share on Hathaway and Delwood is the 85th percentile speeds versus the average speed. 85th percentile, the 85th percentile speed, 85% of the cars traveling in this area were traveling in the neighborhood of 29 miles an hour. This is just yet another data statistic that we can pull from so we can evaluate the true traffic pattern and flow in that area. I'm going to move on to Kramer and Southview. Primary, primary concern of the resident in this area was the vehicles that were traveling off of West Shance heading towards Dayton Country Club incident. You guys were presented with information about, you know, the significant impact that is having in that area. Beginning on November, or on October 21st through November 20th, over a 30-day period, we conducted 33 individual site enforcements utilizing uniform patrol, where they sat in that area and observed violations. What I report to you is, in all, in the time that we were there, we did not see any significant violations. The fastest vehicle speed recorded was 33 miles an hour in a posted 25 mile an hour zone, and zero enforcement actions were taken by my officers. When we evaluate the overall data in Kramer and Southview, 85 and a half, or 88 and a half percent of the vehicles were traveling at or below 30 miles an hour within the posted speed limit. Although the overall traffic volume was down at 1,098, we had 26 vehicles that recorded a speed of greater than 10 miles an hour, and then we did have a few average speeds of greater than 10 miles an hour, which is concerning to us. As a result, we're committed to maintaining a visual presence in this area to reduce the speeds and make the roadway as safe as possible. One of the areas of concern that was presented by the resident was this is obviously an off-season for the Dayton Country Club. So, in the springtime, when golfing season kicks in, we're going to do, conduct a second analysis to evaluate as the golfers move in, and then after Memorial Day, when the pools open and the country clubs in full swing, we'll do yet a third analysis just to see if we can get a comparison of, of the data from today until then. We will diligently continue to allocate our resources and to address any concerns that the citizens present before you or, or bring to us. We maintain constant and ongoing communication with the individuals who spoke to you, they've been relayed this information They've been relayed this information and they understand from the safety standpoint where we'll be going forward. I want to thank Captain Jones for all his hard work on this. He's worked diligently, he's spent many, many, many hours going through charts, researching data, making contact with the citizens, stopping by their house, making sure there's no new concerns, complaints, seeing how things are going. And Mike, I thank you for your efforts on this. The last thing is, we made contact with the third resident who mentioned a concern with the traffic, vehicle pedestrian traffic in the area of Smith Elementary on Aberdeen. I think anytime you have the sheer volume of people congregating into a small place, you're going to have some traffic flow issues. Captain Jones once again went to her house, made contact with her, found, or, once he realized her path to travel, Captain Jones being familiar with the suggested route map that was created several years ago in conjunction with the city, the school district, and AAA to provide the safest routes to walk to school, Captain Jones shared the suggested route with her. From my understanding, as I report to you today, she's been following that route, she's noticed some improvement and she's continuing to monitor her route, but no new complaints have been reported to us. I'll close on this. From that, we recognize that there may be several others, new members within the community or people who have just plainly forgot about that suggested route map. So the Safety Department is currently working in conjunction with the Public Works Department. We are going to update, evaluate, and we are going to provide the safest suggested routes for people to walk based on where they live to where their kids go to school. Since this map was created, we've introduced a fourth crossing guard here at Park Avenue and Far Hills, which will change the route, suggested routes for some citizens. Once that is complete, I will work with the school district to determine the best platform to distribute that to our residents and this will be done yet this spring, so it will be ready to go by the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you for your report. Does anyone have any questions for the chief?
Yes, Chief, the suggested route map, I assume it takes into account the new Schroyer Road enhancements and all that good stuff?
It'll take into account to that, then we have development areas such as Point Oakwood that needs to be added included.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we appreciate your efforts on this as well as all the other folks on the Public Safety Department. Every year I say we have the greatest Public Safety Department in the area and every year I have to say it over again because it keeps getting better. So we really appreciate all the efforts of all the staff of our Public Safety Department and look forward to working with you all in 2019, or 2018, 2018, maybe even in 2019 too. Okay, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Good job. So our status reports are over, we now have a visitor section. I'll wait a second for, y'all don't want to stay till the very end, huh? Thank you for, thank you all for coming, we really appreciate your efforts. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the visitor section. If you have anything you'd like to address council on, please come down. If you could state your name and address for the record, we welcome you.
Hi, I'm Janice Duke, 417 Winding Way in Kettering, Ohio. Mayor Duncan and the council members, thank you for giving me a chance to speak today about the Kettering Ridgeway Dorothy Lane Bridge. As you know, the bridge was built back in 1965. And to get a little bit of history of it, I looked back into the 1963 Kettering ordinance which spoke about putting the bridge together and it spoke about also Oakwood's participation in getting this bridge together. The bridge was built for a number of different reasons and the ordinance stated that for Oakwood, there were primarily two reasons for building the bridge. One of the reasons was that Oakwood felt that by retaining the Ridgeway Bridge as a north-south connector, as a through street, that this would then provide for safe and efficient movement of traffic from Oakwood onto Dorothy Lane. The second reason that it said Oakwood would like to have the Ridgeway Bridge continued was that this would give another alternative as for the thoroughfares that are going through Oakwood north and south, this would give another alternative route for people to go north and south. The bridge was the only safe and efficient way that we could continue having the Ridgeway Bridge go past Dorothy Lane at this point in time. Now the bridge is going to be, need to be replaced in about five years. And the city of Kettering surveyed Oakwood residents and Kettering residents who lived around the bridge, feeling that these would be the people who would be using the bridge and having some reasons for possibly wanting to keep the bridge or not. The citizens who responded to the survey had overwhelming support for the bridge. In the people who were in the mailing area, 81% of Kettering residents and 67% of Oakwood residents said they would like to continue the bridge for all modes of traffic. And actually, back in 65, it was Oakwood who also asked to keep the bridge open for all modes of traffic, for both pedestrians and for cars. Kettering has now decided to apply for a grant with the Ohio Municipal Bridge Program and this is part of Ohio Department of Transportation. And of course, all of us want this to be a very successful grant. And we feel that because this bridge is used by 900 cars and by 150 to 200 pedestrians, we want the most successful grant application possible. And so I'm here asking if Oakwood would participate with Kettering and perhaps Kettering has approached you, I'm not too sure. But I would like you to participate in the grant process with Kettering to make this a very successful grant so that we will be able to get funding for the bridge. The grant process, I think, is going to be starting soon and I am assuming that Kettering will approach you, but at that time, we would like you to think positively and help Kettering so that we can have a successful grant. So thank you, there's a number of other people who here are supporting the bridge and a couple of other people would like to speak.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. Who else would like to address council? Again, if you could state your name and address for the record, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Harry Delaney and my wife Anita and I have been residents of Oakwood for the better part of 18 years. We live at 1830 Southwood Lane East.
Okay.
I want to express a concern that many of us have with the Dorothy Lane Ridgeway Bridge and the announcements by the city of Kettering to alter the bridge dramatically. The changes that they're proposing or considering would eliminate motor vehicle travel across that bridge and safe access down wayside down to Dorothy Lane. We think that altering that bridge to make it a pedestrian bridge or certainly eliminating the bridge would drastically change the traffic patterns here in Oakwood. And obviously Ridgeway is a very strong second alternate to Far Hills for north-south travel through Oakwood and we think that the traffic would continue on Ridgeway, but they would have to find other routes out to Far Hills. So traffic in Forre and Park and Brandon and Hadley and Peach Orchard would probably all be impacted by that. We do have concerns about safety and access to Dorothy Lane using Hillside or Fairmont or Roanoke. Right now Patterson itself on the bottom of Dorothy Hill making a left-hand turn is a real Evel Knievel kind of experience, so we see that only being exacerbated. I'm a member of St. Albert the Great Catholic Church in Kettering and so that bridge is handy for us. We have four masses on the weekend, we have a Saturday evening mass, three on Sunday. That's not a commercial, but we have 200 to 300 people each mass and right now, it's kind of a challenge to get out making a left turn on Far Hills from our parking lot. But we do have an option going right and going down the Winding Way and then coming in the Ridgeway and crossing the bridge. So with a change in that bridge or certainly elimination of that bridge, we have a real crisis. So we ask you two things. We ask you to continue to be vigilant and assure us that the city of Kettering honors the terms of the contract that they committed to and in 1963 and also where possible to support the city of Kettering in their pursuit of a grant funding for a new bridge if in fact the new bridge is required. Thanks very much, we'll be supporting you.
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to address council on this issue? If you could state your name for the record.
Good evening Mayor Duncan, City Council Members and Staff. I'm Tommy Routsong, 494 Lookout Ridge and also 6 Oakwood Avenue property. I'm also Kettering property owner also, so I'm kind of speaking from two sides of my hat here. I am in favor of please having your support to the city of Kettering and the restructure and the grant for their bridge. First of all, I'd like to give you a, and put into our records, an agreement from the 22nd of October of 1963 pinned by the members of the Kettering City Council to the Oakwood City Council of the agreement that was submitted back there in 1963. And this for your record is, is that for you? Basically, basically what it states is the agreement between the city of Oakwood and the city of Kettering as to the maintenance and the access across that bridge and I wish you would keep it in its full entirety. One thing that I mentioned at the city of Kettering Council that I didn't, I'd like to reiterate here, on the other hat as a funeral director, I run a lot of funerals out of St. Albert's. And according to the, our rules from the Safety Department of the city of Kettering, we cannot turn left coming out of the church, that would be north, Steve, to go through that intersection because it causes a real traffic problem and safety concerns. So for years, we've had to turn right and go down Canterbury Lane and down and come across the bridge down through the park to Calvary Cemetery, which was our main cemetery that we use coming from any Catholic institution. A lot of our residents at, in Oakwood are also members of St. Albert's and so as a consequence, that path is used for the best safety of the people that are in our funeral processions and that kind of stuff. So from that standpoint, from that hat, I'd like also to see your support, not only to help the traffic north and south from Oakwood to Kettering, but also from that standpoint, from the funeral and the safety standpoint. So thank you very much for your time tonight. I would like to have one more moment, please, if I can, if I could put another hat on. Everybody knows and God knows that Jay Weiskircher and I haven't seen eye to eye about a lot of issues in the city of Oakwood over the last few years, but I would like to thank Jay for your dedication to our city. I know everything you do is for the best for our city and I know you and I have gone head-to-head more on one occasion, but I want to thank you for your years of service for us and being your last council meeting, I really appreciate all that banter that we've had over the years as well. So I wish you the best for you and your family in the future also, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman.
We appreciate Mr. Routsong's comments and I know Jay, the fact that he received a compliment from you will consider it the capstone achievement of his career with the city. As it relates to the Ridgeway Road Bridge, we want to thank the city of Kettering for A, surveying our residents primarily on the west side of Oakwood, although they received comments from all over Oakwood because everyone knows Oakwood residents have opinions on most everything. But that survey result was made, made copies of that for the council, which two of us reviewed it last week and the rest of it received that information tonight. We also were copied on the video of the Kettering Council meeting where this was discussed and luckily, they told us where to start looking, not wait until 50 minutes into the thing. And we were in the process of evaluating that. It does appear as though there's a strong support for keeping the bridge. We're supportive, even though the bridge is totally in Kettering and it's their responsibility, we are very supportive of their efforts if they can obtain some funding in the next year or two to keep, get this, keep this project on track. So we'll continue to look at that, study as events develop. Our city manager and the Kettering city manager have a very close relationship and I know that he, they will keep us apprised of their progress and if there's any issues that we need to be aware of, that I'm sure that communication will happen. So we are on it. My only question was, in that 63 ordinance, I believe at the top of it, the Kettering ordinance was the name Delaney. Was there any reference or relation to you? Not at all, okay. I think I know who it was, but I'm not positive, so, all right. Dave Fell was the city manager at the time. Yes, and it shows you how the agreement is in favor of the city of Oakwood as opposed to the city of Kettering. So.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to reiterate what you said and go on record to say I was impressed by the city of Kettering and they didn't just ask for a few of the residents right around the bridge there, they actually did a vast survey, went very far into Oakwood, I don't remember the exact street, but did a very nice wide array of questionnaires and the results they got back to us, you know, we saw everything and it was very detailed and I was very impressed by that.
Yes, and I think it's clearly yet another example of regional cooperation truly does exist in Montgomery County contrary to some people's popular belief. So we will, we will have more information on it as we progress. Any other comments? All right, anyone else wish to address council tonight? This would be your time to come down, we have several in the back, please come down and. So if you could state your name and address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone, we welcome you.
I'm, we are Girl Scout Troop G0149. I'm Sarah Hall.
I'm Sarah.
I'm Azilia Vito.
And I'm Lizzie Clark.
We're here for the city's help with finishing our funding for our project. Our project is raising a veterans monument at Orchard Lee Park. The goal of our project is to educate children and help them appreciate veterans at a younger age.
We have been working diligently for months and we have raised a total of $1,500.
Wow.
We kindly ask you to consider matching the amount of money we have raised this past year, which is $1,500.
Thank you for your thoughtful considerations and this will benefit generations of Oakwood residents.
Thank you for your time, have a great day.
Thank you very much, congratulations on this, on this event. Are people, are people on the city council allowed to give you money individually as well?
Yes.
All right, you heard it first. What's 1,500 divided by five? That math should be easy, shouldn't it? Is it like $300 each? I mean, it's just a couple cups of coffee at Starbucks. All right, well, well.
Hey, I got more questions if you're giving out my money.
Go ahead.
So is this going to be a plaque on a, what are we looking at here? What's your monument going to be?
I don't know how it's pronounced, like. Bowrel leaf on, or set in stone. Or it's going to be a plaque, a bowrel leaf on a plaque and the plaque is going to be on a stone about 20 inches high.
Like a large boulder type thing, okay. And do you have a spot picked out or are you still waiting to talk to the city about that?
Back in March, we came and talked to the city and we said that we will own it in Orchard Lee Park.
I hate to be so specific, but where at the park, do you know that yet?
Yes. We do. It's near the shelter, there's one tree by the side of the shelter.
Okay, so you have an idea, okay. I'm just curious, that's fine, that's fine. It's a big park, I was just asking where you want to put it, that's all.
And is there an inscription on the plaque?
Yes, this is about what the plaque is going to look like and this is a blank spot we have, we're still waiting for a sketch from the artist that we asked to draw sketches.
I see. So it's going to say a thank you for, to all the veterans who have served our country?
Yes.
All right.
And it's interesting because all of these people on here are real people that are, have some relation to Oakwood, so.
I see, great. Well, this sounds like a great project, I'm pretty confident you're going to be able to get your funding. If, where do we send the check?
Details, details, right?
Your house, your house.
My house?
How about this? How about you have one of your troop leaders send an email to someone here at City Hall? How about that?
We'll do that, and we'll publish that for you, so. Okay, yeah, we need to know who the payee is also, right? It's not your scholar, individual scholarship. Well, thank you for coming and addressing council. I think it's a great project, and it just shows that we are continuing to have good citizens being raised in the City of Oakwood, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Anyone else wish to address council at this time? You're welcome to come down and. All right, well, we will now close the visitor section of our meeting. We have quite a bit of legislation since its year end. Our first item of legislation, Mr. Stevens will introduce, and it's in relation to traffic and general offenses.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oakwood Traffic and General Offenses Codes. This is the second reading of our annual housekeeping ordinance to align our local traffic and general offenses codes with changes that have been made at the state level. This ordinance will adopt the 2017 replacement pages for our traffic code and the general offenses code. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Next, we have an ordinance by Vice Mayor Byington regarding an ordinance for broadband fiber infrastructure. Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of 2017 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4832 and the Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance Number 4843 to provide for the appropriation of an additional amount of $45,000 to be expended from the Capital Improvement Fund for the purpose of expanding and enhancing existing fiber optic infrastructure in partnership with Miami Valley Communications Council, or the MBCC, member communities for the City of Oakwood, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017. This is a second reading of a supplemental appropriation ordinance that is necessary to address an important capital project. In 2014, Oakwood, along with Kettering, Centerville, and the Miami Valley Communications Council, was awarded a $100,000 grant from the state's Local Government Innovation Fund. The grant funds were used to study existing fiber optic infrastructure in the area and to develop a plan to add additional fiber and build a network that would be of significant value to all MBCC member communities. The result of that study is a proposal to expand 16.3 miles of existing fiber into a 45.2-mile fiber ring. The fiber ring will provide broadband connectivity to the cities of Oakwood, Centerville, Kettering, Miamisburg, Moraine, Springboro, and West Carrollton, as well as the MBCC. All of these communities will be users of this infrastructure, and customer users will include local school districts and other nonprofit and tax exempt organizations. This is an exciting infrastructural development that has many long-term uses and benefits for our city. The finished fiber ring project will be a combination of city-owned fiber and private network-owned fiber that will be accessed through shared use agreements, and the project is scheduled for completion in 2018. This is a $935,000 project to which Oakwood's contribution is approximately $45,000. In order to pursue this project, council must appropriate an additional $45,000 from our Capital Improvements Fund, which is what this ordinance will accomplish. And this is a second reading, we brought it up last time, so at this time, I'd like to move that council adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Epley has an ordinance regarding our sanitary sewer rates.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Streets and Public Services Code of the City of Oakwood, Ohio, increasing rates charged for sanitary sewer utility services. This is the second reading of an ordinance to increase rates for our sanitary sewer utility. City's sanitary sewer utility consists of our own local sewer personnel and city sewer infrastructure, as well as outside services and infrastructure for which we contract with the City of Dayton and Montgomery County. About 25% of the sanitary sewer utility rate that we charge our residents covers our in-house personnel and infrastructure costs, and 75% is the cost of contracting sewer and wastewater treatment services from Dayton and Montgomery County. In the last eight years, we have absorbed five increases in the Dayton rate and three increases in Montgomery County's rate without increasing the rate we charge our residents. On average, each Dayton increase was over 4%, and each Montgomery County increase was over 3%. The Montgomery County rate is scheduled to increase an additional 14% in 2018. We last raised our Oakwood sewer rates in 2009 and cannot sustain further increases in these outside costs without an adjustment to our rate. This ordinance will adjust our rate schedule by eliminating the minimum use credit, eliminating the second tier consumption rate, and increasing the standard consumption rate. For typical household water usage of 1,000 cubic feet per month, these changes will result in an increase of $12.77 per month on a property owner's combined city utility bill, and will first appear on the bills for January 2018. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion for Councilmember Epley? Hearing none. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance from Vice Mayor Byington regarding our financial deposits at the Ohio Pooled Collateral Program.
Yeah, this is about as exciting as it gets right here. This is an ordinance, it's a housekeeping ordinance to update part of the city's administrative code. Section 147-04 is the section that governs the city's financial deposits. When we deposit public funds in the bank, the State Uniform Depository Act, which is mirrored in our local ordinance, requires us to use a bank that qualifies as a public depository. Among other things, that means that the bank must be able to collateralize, collateralize our deposit with pledged securities. Our local ordinance references the collateralization process or procedures described in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 135-18 and 135-181. But the state recently adopted an additional section, 135-182, which creates a pooled collateral program to be operated by the state treasurer, and under pressure from the state of Ohio, all of the local banks which we do business are moving to this new program. This ordinance will amend our local ordinance to match the state's law, allowing us to use banks that collateralize our deposits through the state's pooled collateral program. It is being introduced as an emergency measure because updated depository agreements need to be signed and implemented by the end of the year to ensure continuity with our banking relationships. So I make a motion that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated above.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And next, we have an ordinance to approve our 2018 budget. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, this is our annual budget ordinance, which appropriates the city's funding for 2018. This ordinance is required under Section 6.05 of the city charter, and when adopted, provides formal authorization to the city manager to spend public dollars in providing city services. Our total city budget is divided into five primary parts, with budgeted spending in each as follows. Our general city services is $12,897,015. Our refuse is $1,271,651. Our water utility is at $1,090,386. Sanitary sewer utility is $1,580,987. And our stormwater utility is at $543,596. The city manager and finance director will now make a presentation of the budget that we will be able to, I guess, follow along right here.
Welcome to our city manager, who is back again, as well as our finance director, Cindy Stafford. Welcome.
Your Honor, members of council, we're here again to deliver our annual budget message, and once again, I'm going to give you, I think, an appropriate amount of detail about this budget. I know you've heard a lot of this already, but for the folks watching, I think this is important information, and once again, I have our finance director, Cindy Stafford, CPA, right here next to me to deal with the tough questions that might arise. So basically, I'll give you a quick overview of our major revenue sources and a little bit of history of those sources. I'll give you an overview of the 2018 budget as it's proposed, and then have a few comments for you about the municipal income tax credit factor. So looking back at a 10-year history of our spending, this is a very important bar chart here. In the background, in the blue bars, you see the budgeted figures for our general city spending, which in this case includes the refuse operation. Basically, what you see here are numbers that reflect actual spending here at the city for everything except the three enterprise utilities, being water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. In the foreground, the yellow bars are the actual spending, and what you can clearly see here is the tight budget controls that we've had over the last 10 years. And I would point out a couple things, most notably, if you look at the far right bar, $13.58 million, that's our projected spending for 2017, and we need to keep in mind that that figure includes $800,000 of grant money that we receive directly for, specifically for the Schuhr Road project. So if not for that, that number would be 800,000 less than what you see there. And even with that 800,000 in there, if you compare that number with the 2008 spending, why you can see the obvious message here, which is tight cost controls, and there's many explanations for what you see here. One significant one is personnel, and you'll recall us talking a few years ago about dropping our staffing over a period of years from '95 down to presently about '84. So that's an important component here. Looking at our major revenue sources, we're down to two. We used to have three, but the most important one is our municipal income tax, and this is the revenue source that we rely on to provide some growth ideally each year to help us deal with, you know, the relatively modest but noticeable increases in costs that we see annually. And so you can see a long history here, and, you know, a couple things to point out. You can see between 2011 and '14, you know, as a reflection of the bad economy, and we saw a relatively flat series of numbers there. And now we're seeing another example of that, and that in large part is a function of something that we've talked about extensively, and that is when, you know, other communities around Oakwood raise their tax rates, and we've historically given 100% credit for the taxes paid to other jurisdictions, why their tax rate increases result in a loss of revenue here in Oakwood. And that's a significant problem for us. If you look back 10 to 12 years, there have been over 20 communities around the region here, communities in which Oakwood residents work where this has taken place. The most significant ones, of course, were last year Dayton, a couple years earlier Moraine, both going to the 2.5% rate that we have. Centerville's raised their rate, Kettering has raised their rate. We have a lot of Oakwood residents that work in those four communities. And you look at the cumulative effect of all this, and it's about $800,000 in annual revenue that we have lost, again, over a period of years. So moving to the property tax, as you know, we have two voted property tax issues that bring in money to the city. Of the total property tax bill that we pay here in Oakwood, only about 8% goes to the city to provide for city services, but it's an important 8%. So what you can see here is that unless we either drop a voted issue off of the roll or we ask our voters to approve a new one, you see very little change here. And the only change, for instance, that you see between '98 and 2008, that modest increase, that's a function of the home values in Oakwood escalating, and that brings in via the inside millage a little bit more revenue for the city. In 2008, you'll recall that we let a property tax issue expire, and so you can see the decrease in revenue as a result of that, and then in 2013, our voters approved an issue, and that resulted in that increase that you see in 2014. So at the moment, we have two, again, two voted issues, and my hope is that we can simply renew those two issues for the foreseeable future, at least for the next six to seven, eight years. And then I pledge to you all and to the Budget Committee that this will be the last year that I talk about the estate tax, and so take a close look at this line graph here because I don't intend to show it ever again, but you can obviously see, you know, on the far left column, those are dollars and millions. This was a significant source of revenue to our city, and when that disappeared in 2013, '14, why it had a major, major impact on our community. This is an important, simple, but very important pie chart because it shows you visually the impact of other communities raising their rate and the fact that the city has historically given 100% credit for taxes paid elsewhere. With the increases last year in Centerville to 2.25 and Dayton to 2.5, added to the other increases that have occurred over the years, now a full 56% of the local taxes paid by Oakwood residents goes to other communities. So the taxes we all pay here that, you know, we think is municipal income tax, why only 44% of it citywide comes to the City of Oakwood, and that's a growing problem and something that we need to address. I mentioned that the city gets 8% of the property tax. This pie chart shows you the full distribution, and you can see, and I know you're aware of this, the lion's share of the property tax supports our excellent city schools. We recently saw another ranking of school districts, and once again, you know, Oakwood is at the very top, so, you know, we definitely get, in my opinion, what we pay for here in Oakwood, but about 70% of our property tax goes to the schools. 8% to the city, a little over 1% helps to support some programs at Wright Library, and then the rest of it, over 20%, goes to countywide agencies. Now, moving to the 2018 budget, I have five slides here to show you, and I would just draw your attention to the items in yellow here, and you can just see a comparison between the 2018 budget as proposed and the 2017 budget, and you can see the numbers are very close. Everything I'm presenting to you tonight has been presented to the Citizen Budget Review Committee, and our chair and vice chair will comment on that here in a moment. But basically, it's business as usual when it comes to providing our general city services, and the numbers here reflect that. In the refuse operations, likewise, we're anticipating here an increase of only $11,000 compared to last year in terms of budgeting, and so it's a very tight budget, no change in services. And the water utility, we're actually projecting a decrease in spending, and that's primarily a function of a little less in capital spending program for 2018 compared to 2017. In the sanitary sewer utility, the spending is very close, actually a little bit less than last year, but it's important to note here that the increase in the sanitary sewer rates that you just approved, why they are reflected in the revenue numbers that you see here, and you can see the impact of that relatively modest increase in terms of, you know, a little less than $13 per property for the typical residential use. And then finally, the stormwater fund shows here a significant increase in spending over last year, and as we explained to the Budget Committee, this is a function of needing to purchase the single biggest piece of equipment that we need for this enterprise, and that is the street sweeper that keeps our gutters clean and catch basin inlets and that sort of thing. And the current unit has reached the end of its useful life, and we're planning to buy a new unit next year at $250,000. We have sufficient funds or mudd dollars in this fund to accommodate that, and that new unit will last at least 15 years and hopefully- new unit will last at least 15 years and hopefully closer to 20 years. So it's a one-time major expenditure. In the ensuing two or three, four years, I don't see any major capital coming out of this fund, so I think our balances will be healthy going forward. So very quickly, a few of the highlights in the budget message, which I'll include in the actual budget document. As I said, you know, we're continuing to provide the comprehensive city services. We have no plan to make any changes there. Just as a reminder, the last time our voters voted to raise our income tax rate, and that rate went up from 2.25 to 2.5, why that was way back in 1984. And the last time our property taxes went up was in 2013, as I've mentioned. We're projecting to start 2018 with about 9.3 million in balances, and that's roughly nine months' worth of operating expenses. Our minimum goal is six months, so we're in good shape going into 2018. And as I showed on the one slide, we are showing a deficit spending of about 540,000. We have sufficient reserves to cover that if the revenues and expenses come in as budgeted. But as I say to you each year, we typically estimate a little bit on the low end on revenue and a little bit on the high end on expenses, so that half a million gap will close, as historically it has, and that'll happen in 2018. And we have a significant amount of capital expenditures included in the 18 budget, about 1.8 million, and most notably, we have $4,000, $500,000 worth of street improvements, including our annual sidewalk project, and we have a significant improvement planned for the Schaefer Park tennis courts, and it's a cooperative endeavor with the Oakwood schools, and there's 700,000 in the budget for that. We did some research on the existing tennis facility there and could not pinpoint exactly when it was constructed, but it goes back at least 60 years. So it's been there a long, long time. It's worn out, and so this project contemplates a complete, you know, bulldozing, teardown, and brand-new facility being constructed. And it, as I say, it's a partnership with the schools, and that facility will, when completed, be the home of Oakwood High School tennis. And then the income tax factor reduction, I'll speak to here in a few minutes. A refuse operation starts with a little over half a million dollars in it, which is a good balance to start the year with. We last raised the rates by $2 two years ago, and we have no rate increase planned for 2018, nor do we have any capital equipment. And, but we do look at a couple of major capital expenses coming up in the next two to four years, and you can see them on the slide there. Expensive equipment, but equipment we need to deal with all of our refuse programs. And as I've said before, 20% to 25% of the total cost of our refuse operations, that roughly 1.2 million, why that is the year-round expenses we incur to deal with all the green waste, and we have an extensive amount of it, not just leaves in the fall, but, you know, brush and branch material, all different parts of the year, just a lot of that type of material in Oakwood. The water utility is starting a little over a million, and that's, again, a good balance. We continue to operate our water utility in accordance with all EPA requirements, and you'll recall that we raised our rates this past January after a long, long period, way back to 1994, of holding our rates flat. And even with the rate increase this past January, we're still amongst the very lowest in water rates in the region, currently sitting at eight out of 66 jurisdictions. And we have 50,000 in the capital budget for water improvements in 18. The sewer utilities, our goal is to start the year with a million, so we're a bit below that. And as you heard earlier, we last raised our sewer rates in 2009, so with the rate increase you just approved, why we're addressing this shortfall. And you heard about the 14% rate increase in Montgomery County. That's significant and really prompted the need for us to act at this point. And based on the 2017 rate survey, we were about the middle of the pack in what we pay here in Oakwood for sewer service, 30th out of 63 jurisdictions, and 50,000 is included for capital expenses. And finally, our stormwater utility, we're starting the year with about 280,000. We'll spend that down dramatically with the purchase of the street sweeper, but again, we'll recover in the next three or four years. And our current rate is $7 per month per residential property, and that was set in 2017, and I don't see any need to talk about a rate increase in the stormwater utility for at least two or three more years, perhaps longer. So finally, I'll make a comment on the income tax credit factor or some additional comments here. And basically, again, you know, the fact that we've historically given 100% credit means that we continuously lose money when other communities raise their rates. And I mentioned the 800,000 annual loss that we're up to now. If you look at the total loss over the last 10 to 12 years, why cumulatively, it's over $3 million. So it's very significant money, and it prompts really the extensive discussion we had this fall with the Budget Committee and the need for the ordinance as being proposed for tonight. And I'll just finally say on this topic that the, or one more thing after this, but the, again, the income, the growth in income tax is what has allowed the city to stay away from the property tax. And that's critically important, because the method in which schools are funded in Ohio is what it is, has been what it's been for 10, 15 years, and we don't anticipate any change there. And basically, what the state has done is put the burden to finance local schools on the local communities. And the amount of state money, typically, it's either income tax, state income tax money collected or sales tax money collected, that was funneled back to help finance local school districts, why that's been cut off quite dramatically. So, you know, it behooves us to try to stay away from the property tax and leave that money for the school district to deal with. So I showed this slide earlier, again, 56% of what we pay goes to other communities, and the legislation that is being proposed tonight and that you'll read here in a few minutes contemplates establishing a 90% credit factor. So in a nutshell, instead of getting 100% credit for the tax you pay to another jurisdiction, why if this ordinance is passed beginning in 2018, you would only get 90%. So you'd still get 90%, but 10% you would not get credit for, and, you know, there'd be a little bit of an additional tax payment that would have to be made, but that would go 100% to the city of Oakwood to pay for our public safety department, our streets, our parks, and all those sorts of things. And again, in extensive discussions with the Budget Committee, and I know amongst council here, you know, we worked hard to find a method here of addressing this issue and having the broadest base of citizens involved in what I'll call the fix or the method of addressing it. And this 90% credit factor really does that. It basically says that if you work in, if you live in Oakwood and you pay tax anywhere else, local tax anywhere else, you're going to be impacted by this 10% reduction. And as this slide shows here, over 50% of our residents, our tax filers, will be impacted by it. I mean, if you look at households, where obviously many households here have two income earners or perhaps more, over two-thirds of the households will be impacted to one degree or another. So that's my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Real quick, I have one. From the budget from 17 to 18, I noticed the income tax was flat. Isn't that correct? Is that due to, we're assuming we're going to lose some other funding from other cities because we can't predict what they can do, or are we just, you know, because I got to believe, you know, salaries are increasing, more income tax, you know, just small inflation I'll call, you know, or increase. Is there a reason it's still flat, and we didn't say 2% higher, 3% higher, you know?
Cindy would like to talk about House Bill 5 that the state legislature passed.
Or is it because of House Bill 5?
It's because of House Bill 5.
Thank you. That's fine. I don't need a, I just, I don't need a full House Bill 5 explanation. I just, if that's, if that's the main reason, I'm fine with that.
That is the main reason. And we're going to see that really kick in, especially next year.
In 2018. Right. That makes sense. Thank you.
I'll have more comments on that at the next meeting.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. One of the things that Oakwood is very lucky to have, and council definitely takes advantage of, is our Citizen Budget Review Committee. It's made up of 34 members from across our community. We have seven voting districts and precincts, and we have representation from all of those. They have met four times this year. They've been presented all the same information that we've been presented, and they've had the opportunity to talk directly with us about the different things that they think about the budget. They've reviewed the 2018 budget. They also reviewed the sanitary sewer utility proposal that we just had, and I think at this time, Dave Dickerson and Bill Frappwell, our chair and vice chair, are going to give us a little bit of a taste of the things that were discussed during those meetings.
We will keep this brief.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. As you're aware, Bill and I are co-chairs of the Budget Review Committee, a 30-person committee made up of Oakwood citizens, which has been in place for 30 years. I think Bill and I have been on the committee for 30 years. The committee's role is to advise staff and council on city financial matters and to communicate the viewpoint of Oakwood residents regarding the extent of public services, our residents' desire and their willingness to pay the associated cost. Key to the committee is that members provide not only their own opinions, but also the opinions of the Oakwood residents within the seven districts they represent. This year, as in the past, the committee has been actively engaged in discussions with our city leaders on how Oakwood responds to the elimination of estate taxes, which we'll no longer talk about, and the other state funding cuts. The committee is pleased with the comprehensive and balanced manner in which the city has approached the loss of these revenues. We have seen our leaders work hard each year to develop responsible budget and have witnessed firsthand the major steps taken to control cost. With regards to the proposed 2018 budget, the committee met four times, decided this year to receive detailed briefings on financial matters and to provide feedback regarding our council and our city leaders. We appreciate the good work of the city staff putting together the budget, which is cost-conscious, but allows us to continue providing first-class city services. Therefore, the Budget Review Committee fully endorses the budget and recommends the city council approve the budget tonight. Further, recognizing that our sanitary sewer rates were last increased over eight years ago, and understand the need to address higher wastewater treatment costs, the Budget Review Committee also supports the proposed sewer rate hike as presented. Finally, over the past several years, the Budget Review Committee has studied the income tax tax credit, as just cited, and considered various options to address it, accepting the fact that we are now losing $800,000 annually by giving 100% credit on municipal taxes paid to other communities. The Budget Review Committee unanimously supports the action by city council to pass legislation that would reduce the credit to 90%. We understand that this change to the 90% credit would generate about $600,000 in revenue annually, and believe this is the best action for the long-term financial viability of our community. On behalf of the Budget Review Committee, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and we look forward to working with you in 2018. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Dickerson?
To brief comments.
Yes, Bill.
I want to reiterate what Mr. Byington said, that when these committee meets, Norbert Cloppch, Cindy Stafford, Jay Weiscurcher bring a lot of information to us. There's a lot of discussions. There's a lot of give and take, and never have we ever felt that when we walked out that Oakwood was trying to hide anything. Everything's always laid out on the table, and I think we're very appreciative of that. And then the last thing is the 90% credit. I think honestly, this is as a result, Oakwood has done nothing wrong. You know, this is not Oakwood's fault. This is because other cities have raised their income taxes, and I think this 90%, the way it was discussed at the committee, seems like a reasonable alternative to try to address the problems that you all will be facing about the reduction in income taxes that the city's receiving. So, and I reiterate everything that David said, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for our co-chairs? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much. I can't stress enough how these four meetings really do make a big difference in how we approach our jobs, the discussions that we have. I know that they're not always fun meetings to have because they're, you know, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of financial stuff flying back and forth. And for those of us who are not CPAs, sometimes they can be a little dry, but I really do appreciate you guys taking the time, as well as all the members of the committee taking the time to give us your honest opinions on things, and it really does play into the decision-making process that we have. So thank you both, as well as your committee.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We consider you, all 35 of you, to be our eyes and ears in the community as well, and not all of you think the same way, and it's good to get those varied opinions. Shore Road is a prime example.
That was a prime example.
However, we're receiving nothing but good comments about Shore Road since it's been built. Before, not so much. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Steve.
So at this point, I would move that council waive the second reading of this and adopt this ordinance tonight under Section 3.04 of the City Charter. This ordinance would take effect upon its passage, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And next, we have the ordinance two, approve an income tax credit reduction factor. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, and as has been talked about, this has been a big issue that we have been wrestling with for...
Seven years.
Yeah, seven years. It's one that is very, sometimes difficult to understand, but it's one that we've spent a lot of time trying to come up with the best possible solution, and I think this ordinance does that. In Ohio, residents pay local income tax where they work and where they live. The city of Oakwood currently gives a tax credit for all local income taxes paid elsewhere, up to the full amount of Oakwood's 2.5% income tax. In other words, if a person pays tax where they work, that amount is credited against the tax they owe to the city of Oakwood. This ordinance would reduce that credit. This is a necessary step to stabilize the city's finances after losing nearly $3 million of funding per year due to the 2013 repeal of the Ohio State Tax and state cuts to the local government fund and other state cuts, and after tax rate increases in 24 other cities have cost the city of Oakwood nearly $800,000 in annual revenue. Some of our residents will remember that we introduced a credit limitation ordinance once before in February of 2014, and ultimately decided not to adopt it at that time. That ordinance would have reduced the credit from 2.5 to 1.75, effectively increasing some taxpayers' local tax burden by 3/4 of a percent. This ordinance takes a different approach. Instead of capping the credit at a specific percentage, it imposes a reduction factor of .9 to all taxpayers who receive a credit. In other words, each taxpayer that currently receives a credit will still receive 90% of that credit, and the maximum credit will be 2.25%. This method ensures that all Oakwood residents who have taxable income will pay at least 1/4 of a percent to the city in which they live, and it ensures that no one's local tax burden will increase by more than 1/4 of a percent. We have looked at this issue from every direction, and I can say that we definitely have done that, and feel that this is the most balanced and appropriate way to spread the impact over the broadest base of residents, yet in the smallest way possible. Our 34-member Citizen Budget Review Committee has reviewed the proposal and several others, and as reported by Mr. Dickerson, has unanimously concurred that this approach is the best. Council often introduces ordinances by reading the title and then a legislative summary. But given the nature of the tax credit legislation, I would like to introduce this ordinance by reading the entire preamble text, which describes the lengthy process that has brought us to introduce this ordinance tonight. So there's a lot of wherasses, but they're very important to how the decision-making process happened. First of all, whereas the elected officials of the City of Oakwood are responsible for the city's fiscal well-being, and whereas, over the past five years, the Ohio Legislature has taken steps that have dramatically reduced revenue to the City of Oakwood and many other local governments in the state, most notably the repeal of the Ohio State Tax, cuts to the Local Government Fund, and the imposition of so-called municipal income tax reforms. And whereas, Oakwood has not increased its income tax rate since nineteen eighty-four. Whereas, over the past ten years, tax rate increases in twenty-four other cities, including most recently the cities of Dayton, Centerville, and Moraine, have resulted in a loss of nearly eight hundred thousand in annual revenue to the City of Oakwood because Oakwood gives full credit for taxes paid to other jurisdictions. And whereas, through ongoing dialogue with Oakwood residents, council has determined that a majority of citizens appreciate the comprehensive and first-class city services and desires to keep those services as they are. And whereas, to the best of its ability, council has focused on reducing the city's expenses by limiting expenditures to those that are necessary for maintaining the operation of the city in a responsible manner, and by increasing fees for services that are appropriate for payment by the users of those services rather than general tax revenues. And whereas, council has recognized and communicated to the citizenry that cost-cutting and user fees alone are inadequate to close the budget shortfall, and that it will become necessary to enhance the city's revenue stream through tax increases in order to stabilize the city's financial position. And whereas, in May two thousand and thirteen, council placed a three-point-seven-five mil property tax levy on the ballot that was approved by a margin of fifty-five percent to forty-five percent, and generates approximately one million dollars annually. And whereas, council has consistently communicated to the citizenry that this new property tax revenue by itself would fall short of providing the additional money needed to maintain the existing service levels, that additional revenues would be needed. And whereas, in spite of council's efforts to increase certain revenues and to reduce, eliminate, and/or minimize expenses relative to the operation of the city, combined revenues for all sources to the city are forecast to be insufficient to cover the city's essential budgeted expenses. And whereas, having discussed and reviewed revenue options with the thirty-four citizen members of the Budget Review Committee and received the committee's endorsement of a credit reduction action addressed by this ordinance, city council has concluded that the most appropriate and balanced means to generate the additional revenue needed to maintain the city's services at a current level is to reduce the credit Oakwood citizens currently receive for taxes paid to other municipalities. And whereas, by taking this action, it is estimated that the city will collect approximately six hundred thousand in additional annual income tax revenue, thereby helping to offset the eight hundred thousand loss and allowing the city to continue maintaining critical public infrastructure and providing the finest city services. Let's see, so at this time, all, with all of that said, this is a first reading of this particular ordinance, and so I'm going to not make a motion at this time, we will address it again in January.
Thank you.
But I'm open to questions if anybody has any.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Byington? All right, I mean, I support this ordinance, and if we approve it at our meeting on January second, it's going to stabilize our financial situation, it's going to provide for future property tax renewals only, city property tax renewals only, and it's going to protect our city from revenue losses if other cities continue to increase their rates. It also endorses the financial stewardship of our city staff, who work tirelessly on behalf of all of our residents. And I'd like to reemphasize the input that we received from the Budget Review Committee, and thank them for all their assistance over the last seven years as we have dealt with these troubling financial times. So, I will have additional comments at our meeting on January two, prior to adopting or voting on this legislation. You're still on the dais here, I think, Mr. Byington.
I think so.
Well, why don't you tell me what you want to talk about next?
Okay. The next ordinance is one to establish an amendment to the organization and staffing schedule for the purpose of creating water and sewer maintenance foreman and a director of personnel and planning classification to increase the school crossing guard position from three to four, and to eliminate the positions of assistant public works director and assistant city manager, and declare an emergency as such. This is an ordinance to update our organizational staffing schedules, basically, so it reflects the city's current staffing needs. The updated schedule includes the following changes. First, it creates a public works water and sewer line maintenance foreman classification, it creates a director of personnel and planning classification, it eliminates the classification of an assistant city manager and assistant public works director, and changes the school crossing guard staffing from three to four. This ordinance is being introduced as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect at the first pay period of the new year. So with that said, I would move that council adopt this as an emergency ordinance for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And finally, Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance regarding our personnel.
Yes, this is to repeal ordinance number forty-eight thirty and to establish an amended personnel schedule dated December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, and declare an emergency as such. This ordinance is to update our city's personnel schedule. It accomplishes three things. It restates the wage increase for the city's non-bargaining unit employees that were previously authorized in November two thousand and sixteen by ordinance forty-eight thirty, and includes an additional wage increase for the water plant superintendent classification. It establishes the maximum compensation for the newly created classification of water and sewer line maintenance foreman, as well as the director of personnel and planning, consistent with the compensation already in effect for other foremans and director classifications. And finally, it increases the paramedic certification payment for employees in the public safety captain classification to match the paramedic certification payments established in the Public Safety Department collective bargaining agreements. This ordinance is being introduced as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect at the first pay period of the new year. So, with that, I would move that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes our legislation. We have no staff report this evening, but we do have a city manager report, am I correct?
You're correct, Your Honor, but it'll be very brief. The only thing I want to comment on is, if you haven't noticed, that winter has hit, and hats off to our Public Works Department, who worked a lot of hours over the weekend dealing with the first snow event, and, you know, things were pretty slick out there early Saturday evening, but things got dealt with pretty quickly, and we've got all the equipment set up, we have enough salt, I think, to get us through the winter, and, you know, we don't have the salt availability issues now that we had two or three years ago, so if we need to purchase some additional, well, we can get it. But the other thing that happened on Saturday, a few hours before the snow hit, is we had a water main break on Sweetwood, deep in on the west side of Oakwood there, going down the hill towards the cul-de-sac, we had a leak in the six-inch pipe, and, while we had three public works employees out there for about five hours with Foreman Tom Long and made the necessary repairs, so, it was a busy weekend for the Public Works Department. And I have to take the liberty tonight to talk about Army football, light-hearted here, but it's been twenty years, and I guess I say this to the other academy graduates that live in Oakwood, and I know there are a number of them, I don't know them all, but we've got Naval Academy grads, we have Air Force Academy grads, and some West Point grads, and it's been twenty years since my Army team has beaten both Air Force and Navy in the same year. And why, when you do that, you get this huge trophy, which I think weighs over a hundred pounds.
Commander Chief's Trophy.
The Commander Chief's Trophy, and so it's been a long, long time, but it was a heck of a game last Saturday, fourteen to thirteen over Navy in the snow, and earlier this year we beat Air Force twenty-one to nothing, which was very unique as well. Air Force has typically got a good team, so, I wore my class ring to the meeting tonight to celebrate, and I look forward to jabbing my dear friend, Naval Academy grad Rick DePrado at Rotary this coming Friday morning.
And I didn't realize that, I knew you could beat Navy, but I didn't realize you had to beat both Navy and Air Force to get this trophy.
You had to beat them both, right. And then, my final comment tonight is about Jay Weiskircher, and it was alluded to earlier here tonight, that, you know, Jay is in fact retiring, and on January second, we're planning a, an event, a public event here at our council meeting to formally recognize Jay in his thirty-five-plus years of service to Oakwood, and we look forward to that event. But I'll just say tonight that, you know, Jay came here in April of nineteen eighty-two, a long, long time ago, right out of graduate school, and has just, you know, served this community. To say with distinction is a gross understatement, but thirty-five years of just fantastic, outstanding service, and we look forward to, again, formally recognizing Jay here in about three weeks.
Any questions, sir, for the city manager? Hearing none, then we will go to council comments. Councilmember Epley.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no comments.
Thank you, the streak continues. And Councilmember Hilton?
Your Honor, just a couple. First, I'd like to congratulate Carol and her staff. Holiday of Lights, yet another great event. I saw the vice mayor and the mayor last night, complete with snow and rides and Santa Claus, so, great job. Also, I know we won't formally welcome them until tomorrow at three o'clock, but I'm just thrilled about the, about goodwill being in our community. I've been there both as a donor and a shopper, and it's just, it just looks wonderful, so I'm excited about tomorrow, so, I hope everybody gets there sometime.
Three P.M.
Three P.M.
Councilmember Stevens?
Just real quick, I'd like to welcome new PSO Joshua Wells, another great officer in our police force, public safety officer, I should say. But I would like to elaborate a little bit on, and I'll combine them, because I've worked with both these gentlemen for the last eight years, Chief Allen Hill and Lieutenant Mike Tanner, and every time I run into both these gentlemen, you know, what I feel is the best part of them, being an Oakwood resident my whole life, and what I think of police officers is that, because that's how we see them most of the time, is as police officers in the community, and I grew up with this, in this community, where the police officers would stop and talk to you, and just engage you, and ask questions, and talk, and you can ask them questions, and that's what I find out of both these individuals. I'm very impressed with the promotion that they both received, very well-deserved, as, you know, for example, Captain Hill said to, about Lieutenant Tanner, I, well, Captain Hill is very well-deserved, I mean, it's hand-in-hand, they're both very classy individuals, they're very professional, but at the same time, we can talk with them, we can joke with them, we can actually have a conversation. If you have a question, they'll answer it on, you know, our terms, and none of us up here claim to be a, you know, police fire paramedic expert, and if I have questions, you know, for, you know, I'm, my committee is public safety, that's one of my roles on council, I ask a lot of questions, and I, and they're both wonderful to work with, I'm very, very excited that they received the promotions, you know, because we don't really get involved when that's a staff, that's handled at staff level, which is wonderful, and I'm very impressed with who was chosen, why they were chosen, and I'm just very excited about the future of this department with those individuals leading the way.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Prior to coming to our council meeting this evening, I had the opportunity to go to Washington Township and celebrate Joyce Young's retirement from the Township Trustees in Washington Township. She's served not only the township, but also the entire region with class and distinction for twenty-two years. She will in fact be missed. There was quite, quite a good attendance from people, not only just from inside the township, but outside as well, so, we wish you good luck, Joyce. And while we were away, the State Senate is back in Columbus, and they are now currently talking about something called a SERP. A SERP, S-E-R-P, is a supplemental executive retirement plan, and it's essentially deferred compensation. So the rich executive gets to put away some of his salary, and then when he feels like getting close to retirement, he can then take that money. It's put on the W-2, just like my salary, your salary, and everybody else's salary here, but the Ohio Society of CPAs and their lobbyists from the Ohio Chamber of Commerce have decided this should no longer be taxed, for municipal purposes. It will still be taxed for state of Ohio purposes and federal purposes. So it's yet one more attack on the home rule of cities. I'm beginning to think that their next legislation will be, if you have a W-2 with box one, and you can show a Republican Party ID card, you only have to pay tax on that. So, we'll see how that progresses. And with that, our next meeting is January two, because it's an organization meeting, our charter says it normally has to be the first Monday in January, but since the first Monday in January is New Year's Day, we're going to meet on Tuesday, January second, so that's a different date than we normally have council meetings, and we will swear in our two new council members, which are the same two old member councils, and then elect a mayor and vice mayor, and then deal with other items on our agenda, so I look forward to seeing all of you on Tuesday, January second. The meeting is adjourned.